Hearing none, hall in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry the agenda is approved. We'll move on to communication. We have public comment. The state board agenda is full and I may place limits on public comment based on the number of members of the public who intend to speak. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. When your time is allotted, I will ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. Do we have a number of people as far as account as far as public comments today?
Eric.
So if you are here and you would like to make a public comment, if you're joining through Zoom, use the raise hand feature. If you're joining through phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand there. I'll try and go down and make sure we don't miss anybody.
There is a comment on Zoom this morning.
All right, it looks like we have three, three who have their hand raised in Zoom.
Three who have their hand raised. People go with five minutes. I have two of those on Zoom. Mark Jacobs, you are first, Mark.
All right, Mark, give me a second. Let me make you speaker.
Good morning, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good morning, my name is Mark Jacobs. I'm the founder and president of Reaching Higher Iowa, which is an organization committed to restoring Iowa's leadership position in K-12 education. And I'm also the founder and president of Great Public Schools for Iowa, which is an organization committed to helping to develop a robust public charter school program in the state. I'm here this morning to speak in support of the charter school application for Horizon Science Academy that you'll be considering later on in the agenda. And I was also deeply involved in the passage of House File 813, which gave rise to this application that was signed into law by Governor Reynolds back in May of 2021. One of the primary objectives of that piece of legislation was to help broaden public education alternatives in Iowa by meeting unmet needs. And there's three observations I wanted to make briefly about the Horizon Science Academy application. First is this group has assembled a very strong group of community leaders. The second is they have partnered with an organization that has a very high level of success and track record, high level of credibility in operating public charter schools. And the final point I'd like to make is that they've targeted a demographic and population here that I think would certainly qualify for meeting unmet needs. And the bottom line is the approval of this application for Horizon Science Academy would I think do great, take great steps to kind of broaden public school opportunities in the Des Moines area, particularly for those coming from low income households. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mark. The next speaker I have for public comment is Roger Brooks. Roger? Is Roger Brooks available?
Are they there in person? I do not have Roger Brooks on Zoom.
Okay. I have Sunny, is it Richard?
And I will, I will pinch hit for Roger Brooks. We are the Roger Brook, I'm Sunny Richard, and we are the founding board members for the New Horizon Science Academy. And Roger's out of town and I think he had some Zoom difficulties, so, so I'll take his place. The, we have, I'll talk about Roger a little bit. He was CEO of Central Life, which was an emirass in Athene, a businessperson, but very engaged in education. He was very involved with the founding of the downtown school. He was engaged with Central Academy and his organization funded the advanced placement classes. And also he was involved with the charter school that was established about a dozen years ago under the old law. And, and my background is in technology, but, but I have volunteered in the inner city, in the River, River Bend area. So we're both very familiar with the human services area, the educational area, and, and also with kind of how the world works. We became engaged with, with the concept schools organization this past June and visited McKinley School that is in Chicago. That is a K through 12 school. And, and their results are outstanding. They have over 90% of their children qualify for college and have scholarships. And so, and we spent, we spent a day there. Concept Schools has 31 schools in six states and a very proven track record of, of strong performance. We personally talked with, with the staff in Chicago and several other locations just in doing our own due diligence about concept schools. And, and the, the, we feel very, very strongly that this is an organization that can help establish a very successful charter school in, in the Des Moines area and provide students and, and their families with an option, an alternative, and gives them a choice. And, and so we're very excited about that and, and strongly, strongly ask for your support for the, for the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment online that we need to be aware of?
We have two more.
Okay.
Josh Ein. I'll allow you to talk. And you may proceed.
Thank you. Board, I appreciate your time today. I want to talk briefly about the major you guys will look at at the end of the day to adjust the bylaws to the Iowa High School Athletic Association allowing socioeconomic factors to be placed on classification. Interscholastic competitive sports personally shaped me as a school administrator from O-line. As a teacher, coach, former athlete, and now as a parent, I have watched and witnessed the landscape change underfoot as we've gone more to club sports. And that unfortunately benefits those that live in certain zip codes or have certain socioeconomic, economic affluence. Rural Iowa has generally become poorer and that, that's made the athletic landscape dynamically shift over the past two decades. As policymakers and leaders, if we knew that there was unfair competitive balance within the rules of the game, we would immediately address those and fix them so that the game is fair. While socioeconomic status and the impact it has is harder to see in any gymnasium or field on any given night, the data that I've shared with each of you through email shows that it is clearly present. If I can use the ever-growing world of competitive gambling as a metaphor briefly, if we were to be betting on high school sports, and thankfully we don't, the house would have rigged the rules to win. In head-to-head matchups, nearly 60% of the time, the school with the lower socioeconomic status will win. Over a career, a high school career or season, students know this, unfortunately. It harms participation and they know that the games, the rules of the game are unfortunately rigged against them. We have a duty to fix this. We know the system is broken. And while the solution that you're going to look at today may not solve the problem entirely, and it doesn't go far enough, it really is a great first step and one that is widely supported across the state by school administrators. So strongly in support of your approval today. And I thank you for your time and your service to the students of Iowa and to the state.
Thank you. We have one more public comment.
Yes, one more, Solene, Richard, you're up.
I just spoke.
I should just spoke?
Saved you two minutes.
Okay. Hearing that, there's no other public comment to be made, we will move on the agenda. We have the director's report.
Well, good morning. I want to start with typically, once we get into session, we'll have a legislative update. I want to give Eric a quick chance just to give you a briefing since we are in the first week of session and there was a lot of activity. I don't want to steal some of the things he's going to say, so if he wants to give, I'm going to give him the floor for just a minute to go over some things with you. And then I have a couple pieces I'll address also.
So, good morning, everyone. Eric St. Clair, Legislative Liaison for the Department. I'll make this brief and quick, there's not a ton to talk about there. There certainly is stuff happening already over there. So the session started Monday, as you're all aware. The first week is spent, there's a lot of formalities that they cover, a lot of organizational meetings. Everyone has to pick their seat where they're going to sit, which takes a lot of time. I know it's hilarious. They even have like speaker chairs and go around the clipboard on the House floor making sure everyone had seats, so it's funny to watch. That was a tangent, sorry. But yeah, so we're in the first week. We have, we closely monitor bills and legislation on multiple committees, but obviously our focus is usually on what happens in the House Education and the Senate Education Committees. Both of those committees this year have two new chairs. There is Representative Scott W. Wheeler, who chairs the House Education Committee. He was previously the vice chair of that committee and moved up to chair that committee. And in the Senate, it's Senator Ken Rosenbaum, who has served for, on that committee for several years and is now taking the chair. That was previously chaired by Senator Amy Sinclair, who has moved up to, she's the president now of the Senate. So lots of changes, lots of shuffling happening there. We also watch the Education Appropriations Subcommittee. Those are chaired by two new members, Jawaels Carter-Nordman in the House and Senator Jeff Taylor in the Senate. So that work of those committees, the Subcommittee's appropriations will pick up more towards the end of session as they move away from the policy bills, more towards the appropriations bills, but we do engage with them throughout the session as well. So, so yeah, we'll, we'll keep you posted on what happens, but safe to say that education will again be a priority this session. Education, education reform, future, the governor's condition of state address, I'm sure you'll touch on that more. But that obviously was the first policy item that, that she addressed in her speech was around the education savings accounts. Immediately following her speech, they did introduce versions of the ESA bills in both the House and the Senate as companion bills. HSB 1 in the House and Senate, SSB 1022 in the Senate. So we do actually have tangible policy language there. And they are moving very quickly with those bills this afternoon. They have the Subcommittee in the Senate for that bill, which is the first step in the legislative process for consideration of bills. And it's also the, an opportunity for the public to engage in comments around the contents of, of that policy. We have also just seen that the House has scheduled for next Tuesday a Subcommittee on that bill as well. So they are moving very quickly on ESA because as signaled by the governor, it is a high priority this session for her. There is several other policies that were addressed in her speech, which I'm sure Director Lebo will get into, around education reform. And over the weeks, more bills to be introduced, which will provide a clearer picture of how she intends to implement her agenda that she outlined. Last year, we tracked hundreds of bills related to education in some way, shape, or form. And I think we're off to a similar start this year. I haven't updated my legislative tracker today, but we're already up to about 30 bills that are impacting education and it is Thursday of the first week. So they are off to a quick start. So ultimately, we'll talk more about what happens over there, certainly at these meetings, but we do have resources available for you to utilize as well. Each week, we have a newsletter, legislative newsletter that we produce, which I believe you should all receive, but we will make sure you do if you do not. And we also have legislative resources on our website, like a bill tracker that is updated daily, which shows which bills we are tracking very closely. Are there any questions about the session as it kicks off?
Not yet.
Thanks, thanks, Eric. It will be important to follow this information. And again, the key piece I want to stress is that we can talk generally kind of about high overview priorities, but we really don't know until we see the final language. It really does evolve. So how a bill begins, how it will actually be implemented, and where it lands at the end, that really matters. So lots of times we get questions about how will this be implemented? What does it mean? Well, we don't necessarily know until we've seen the final language. So Eric will do a great job of keeping you updated on that, but every Friday, you should get more information on where we're at. And then please feel free to reach out with us with any questions. To stem off from that then, obviously if you did watch the condition of the state, education was a top priority. Big bucket ideas were the education savings accounts, a focus on early literacy, which were actually very, Dr. Berandik and her team were very excited to start engaging with districts on some of the sport we can offer there. Some flexibility in some of the pots of funding with the priority of using that for teacher salaries. And then some parental rights and transparency items as well. So big buckets that come out in specific bills. All that information will be available as they're introduced, but wanted to make sure if you had not seen that you're aware of kind of the big ideas. The one I do want to spend a little more time talking about then is the, at the end of the session, you might have heard the governor refer to her executive branch reorganization, which is the first massive reorganization of state government, I think, in like 40 years and the first time this has been done. It is substantial. And I wanted to get a quick overview of what it means for the department as we are one of the executive branch agencies that will be addressed in this reorganization. Currently, there are 37 executive branch agencies and directors. And when you compare that to other states, most states have anywhere from 15 to 20. The president only has 24. So it is sort of out of balance in terms of the scope of our work. The intent then is to, and the design and the proposed reorganization, as this has to all go through legislation, is reduce that number from 37 to 16. So what that means for the department is that some things will come in and some things will go out. Agencies that will come under the authority of the department would be the Board of Educational Examiners, College Student Aid, and STEM. In addition to the two special schools, the Braille and Sight Saving School and the Deaf and Hard Apparent School would be under the authority of the board. What would be going out would, oh, and excuse me, the IPTV, which is sort of under the department now, remains as part of the department, kind of as a dotted line. What would be going out would be Volk Rehab, the State Library, and some adult education programs that we provide. So this is kind of the broad landscape and the intent is to think about, all the work that has to do with education was within education. So there's an exciting opportunity to utilize our resources in a way that's more effective, more efficient, and can help us to better serve our stakeholders. So lots of details yet to come. We do anticipate final bill language being introduced, but this is a massive, massive change of effect to all state agencies that I wanted to make sure you were aware of. Any questions you want to ask about that?
The governor also said something or signed something about administrative revision.
Yes.
Be hearing more about that as well in a few days.
Actually, that's my next thing. And I was going to, it's Thomas in here, I was going to tee up Thomas for a brief overview of that as well, because that does have an impact on our work also. Would you like to have the phone out, Thomas?
So the Iowa Administrative Code is roughly 200,000 pages. In 1958, all agency rules fit within a 600-page volume, from the Board of Accompaniment to the Board of Watchmaking Examiners. And it tickles me to know that the state once had a Board of Watchmaking Examiners. The, the idea behind this executive order is to decrease rules that do nothing more than regurgitate statute. That doesn't add rulemaking or law value. If the statute defines a widget as this thing and the rule defines a widget as this thing, the rule doesn't add any value. So part of the executive order would be to put rules on a diet. If there are rules that don't add value, that don't add meaning, that do nothing more than regurgitates statutory conditions or requirements, solve that through cross-references. The other key part of the executive order is to sort of look at what is still necessary. I mean, the Board of Watchmaking Examiners, if it still existed, probably should be sunsetted. Like, who makes watches in Iowa? I'm certain there's somebody who does because it's a hobby, that it's not an industry of sufficient size that deserves regulation. So the statute requires public hearings. In certain rulemakings, the executive order would require public rulemakings for all, all, public hearings for all rulings. The statute requires a five-year review of rules, the executive order would accelerate that to three. So every rule, every agency is going to go through a, do we still need it? Look, does it add value? And since the department's rules are, go from chapter one to chapter 120, the department and the board will be going through this work quite a bit. As the process unfolds, as a new rule or proposed rule or an amendment comes to you, I will explain, or staff will explain to, other staff will explain to you how it fits within the governor's executive order. But that's a high-level overview of the ask to put the, put the Iowa Administrative Code on a, on a diet.
Thanks, Thomas. Two last things, oh, yes.
Question, going back to the what's in and what's out.
Yep.
Comment you made, some of those, if not all of them, have an advisory board or an elevator view of that.
The intent is for the work to kind of remain the same for right now, but there will be some things we have to address in terms of when they, when they come under the same umbrella. There is not an intention to change authorities with the state board. So for the most part, our work won't change, but that will continue to be addressed as this kind of evolves. Yes, those, those should remain.
And then Thomas, is, is the whole rulemaking, you know, sometimes when we address rules, you tell us, well, this is an edit more than a substance in a rule. It, it sounds like this is a massive editing, getting duplicative things out and cross-references as opposed to a wholesale substantive rework like Professor Bonfield would have done.
It's a little bit of both.
Okay.
It's taking out things that don't add value, but also taking out rules or refining rules that are beyond their best by days. That don't add, don't add, don't protect the public or could protect the public better. Aren't statutorily required or aren't, or exceed statutory requirements in a way that does not protect the public, does not protect human life, does not improve economic, all of the big things that an agency was rulemaking for. So it's a bothy and it's a getting rid of duplicative language, but also looking at each substantive rule to make sure that it still serves a purpose.
Do you foresee the reorganization that Ann was referring to as Director Lebo was referring to as, as affected, affect, you know, are these interdependent things or are they two separate things?
They will force multiply each other because it's by necessity, we will, every state agency will be doing rulemaking to correct the language on Department of Human Services and Department of Public Health as they come together. So as things move, there will be rulemaking just to define who's responsible for what.
So some of the rulemaking in conclusion of the reorganization.
Rapid finish.
Thank you.
Other questions on that? Two and a quick updates and also we will be offering, I think I've updated you a little bit on this before, of some of the resources we have from OCIO in regards to cybersecurity. We are going to be offering some additional communications to the field through some webinars to let them know what's available, some different tools, as we know, that continues to be a concern throughout the state of Iowa. Trying to be as proactive as we can. We know that that team is working together to figure out different types of supports for schools as we work for that process. We make sure you're aware of those when they are announced. And then just the continuation of our, you know, we've had a priority on workplace learning and different partnerships with schools and communities. Kristi Valesky and her team has organized some initial resources and webinars we've been offering as well to offer our support to schools as they look to build those, those continued partnerships. So you should see those also, always welcome to attend if you're interested. Questions, anything else? That's all that I have for right now. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund Annual Report. Rules from chapters 41 and 120. Those for chapter 72.
Move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion? We now call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think Mike signed a delay.
He is, yes.
Sorry about that.
No problem, Mike, thank you. The motion is approved. Next item on the agenda is the appeal decision that challenged student club for Johnston Community School District. And Thomas, you're going to go to start?
Members of the board, this is a unique procedure. The Iowa Administrative Code, Chapter 6, allows for formal objections to proposed decisions. This, I believe it's the first time that a formal objection was lodged to a proposed decision, since I lodged a formal objection to a proposed decision when I was in practice in 2002. The, the appellant's will have, are here, attorneys are represented by counsel and are also personally present. I'm going to step out of the room during argument and deliberation, so feel free to be candid. And Assistant Attorney General Jordan Heschberg will answer any questions on behalf of the department regarding the proposed decision and procedures going forward. So any questions for me from the board before I turn the floor over to Dr. Robbins to recognize the appellate?
I don't have any questions that the appellant's are recognized, so.
Thank you, Thomas.
You may please, just sit as a chair so you can be heard by the things.
Good morning, my name is Andrea McCulley. And on behalf of the appellant's, thank you for your time and consideration this morning. And I'm sorry, I'm going to be reading this because I'm not a trained representative of anything. Our appeal is based on three arguments, each of which alone is more than enough reason to overturn the decision of the Johnston School Board. First, the board violated its own policy when it voted to approve the request for TPUSA's Johnston Chapter to become a sanctioned student club at Johnston High School. Second, the Equal Access Act does not protect this club because it was not student-initiated and because the national organization has an unreasonable amount of control over it. And third, three of the seven board members should have recused themselves from voting on this club's application due to a conflict of interest. When read correctly, School Board Policy 504.2, which governs student organizations, stated that, and quote, "Prior to any consideration by the board, the proposed organization must submit its constitution and bylaws, and the constitution and bylaws of any off-campus organization with which it is affiliated." If an organization does not have a constitution, it must submit a written statement of purpose for consideration. Turning Point USA, the outside organization with which this school club is affiliated, is a 50- is a 501(c)(3), and it is therefore required by the IRS to have bylaws. Federal law requires that nonprofit organizations provide a copy of their bylaws upon request to any member of the public that asks for them. The proposed decision states that, quote, "Appellants have the burden of proving the unreasonableness of the school board's action and that the standard of proof is whether the school board's decision is supported by a preponderance of evidence," end quote. There is plenty of evidence that bylaws do exist. They're required by law, which was communicated multiple times during public comment at board meetings prior to club approval. Two board members stated that the idea that bylaws are not available is contrary to the fact that they must be filed with the IRS on an organizational request to be recognized as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, that bylaws are publicly available, and that a nonprofit must provide their bylaws when such a request is made. According to the proposed decision, quote, "The school board heard information from Assistant Superintendent Dr. Rorda that they were unavailable to locate the documents," end quote. Dr. Rorda did not say that bylaws do not exist. Her statement during the board meeting was that the bylaws were not available on the TPUSA website, and she even took ownership of any oversight that may have occurred under her direction. LG, this is the student who applied for the club, stated that he was only told to obtain a constitution and that he was not told that bylaws would need to be submitted as well. LG then claimed that he requested bylaws and that he was advised that the national organization does not have bylaws. This is factually incorrect and in direct contradiction to his statement 30 seconds earlier when he said he was not instructed to obtain the bylaws. Why would he ask for them if he didn't know they were required? The board had a lengthy discussion about whether or not it goes against policy to approve this club without the bylaws, stating that other clubs also operate in the district that may or may not have submitted bylaws. The board never questioned the existence of the bylaws. One board member even stated, and I quote, "If we know that bylaws exist, how can we ethically say that bylaws do not exist?" End quote. Clearly, they were aware that bylaws are required, that they exist, and they recognized that they were not submitted, and they voted to approve the club anyway, knowingly violating board policy. You may hear the district and its council argue that the mission statement is an acceptable substitute for both the constitution and bylaws, but that is not how the policy is written. The substitute is specified as an acceptable replacement only for the constitution, and that was recognized by the board. According to the proposed decision, quote, "The policy does not require constitutions and bylaws where none exists. In the absence of those documents, the policy requires a mission statement which LG provided. The school board complied with Policy 504.2," end quote. The notion that bylaws don't exist is baffling since bylaws must exist and must be provided when requested. Appellants have obtained the bylaws and provided them as part of this appeal, which completely negates the statement in the proposed decision. The reasonable thing for the board would have been to postpone their vote on this club until all documents were submitted as required by board policy. They also had the option to suspend Policy 504.2, which would have cleared the way for a vote. They did neither and instead chose to willingly ignore their own policy and took the vote. Let's look at the appeal's second equally important argument. The board claimed that the Equal Access Act prohibits them from denying this club request. The proposed decision flatly ignores appellant's arguments refuting the board's claims. This club was not student-initiated, and there are serious questions about the level of control over its operation exerted by the national organization. The EAA does not protect this club. It was admitted by Jen Turner, an activist with no kids at this school, and LG, that she recruited LG to start this chapter at the request of TPUSA's paid field representative. Appleby might argue that a student filled out the club application, and that is enough evidence that this was a student-initiated club. But filling out the application was an outcome of parents organizing prior to the students submitting their requests to form a club. The definition of initiate is to cause something to happen. Jen Turner recruited LG to submit the application, and that actually is how this club was initiated. In addition to the fact that the club was not student-initiated, TPUSA demands an extraordinary amount of control over this club, including access to student data, a requirement to approve outside speakers at club events, and login access to the club's social media accounts. This outside control is in direct violation of the EAA, and the club request should have been denied. Although when questioned, LG did state that the club would be run independently, the agreement that the club signed with the national organization indicates otherwise. The idea that the club's social media account password is given to the national organization is preposterous. LG stated that it is if something happens with the club. It is an independent, if this is an independent school club, it should not be up to the national organization to ensure its longevity. Finally, let's look at the third argument. Three of the board members should have been, should have recused themselves of the vote because they were actively advocating and recruiting for the club for quite some time outside of board meetings. They violated school board code of ethics by discussing, discussing in a private meeting matters that were subject to their official control as board members and promising to vote in support of a matter before considering opinions from parents and members of the school district community.
I'll ask you to wrap with your comments.
I have two more sentences.
Okay.
This is not in an effort to prevent school students from being involved with a conservative club. Instead, it is an effort to hold the school board accountable, the district stakeholders, and require them to follow their own policies and federal law. The decision by this board to allow this club sets a dangerous precedent that renders school board policies unenforceable. We ask you to overturn it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Carrie Weber. I'm an attorney with the Allers &amp; Cooney Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the Johnston Community School District in this matter. Also present are Superintendent Laura Kaser, Associate Superintendent Nikki Rorda, and in your overflow room, my co-counsel Danielle Haynefield, as well as Board President Katie Fiala this morning. The issue before the board today is the approval of a student organization by the Johnston Board on April 25th, 2022. We're here today to urge the board to affirm and adopt in full the proposed order that's been presented. All of the argument, and we would agree that the appeal is based on the three arguments presented by the appellant, all of the argument must come back to the board's standard of review in this case. That is the procedural posture, if you will. This board's review is narrow and deferential. The board cannot substitute its judgment for that of the Johnston Board, nor can it substitute appellant's judgment for that of the Johnston Board. It's not the, the appeal is not whether this was a good decision, it's whether it was supported by reason, whether the board followed its policy in adopting this decision, and it cannot be overturned unless it's unreasonable and contrary to the best interests of education. So I would urge you, as you're thinking about the appeal issues today, to do so through that narrow and deferential lens. Again, I don't have 10 minutes of comments. Primarily, I think the record speaks for itself. I would like to answer questions if you have any. I do have a few comments on the three arguments that were presented, but if there are questions, please feel free to interrupt as we go along. So the first issue is that of whether the board followed its policy. You do have Board Policy 504.2 in the record. I'm not sure if you have numbered pages, but I believe the text is there. And in Board Policy 504.2, which pertains to student organizations, it discusses constitution and bylaws of both the local student organization and the constitution and bylaws of any national organization with which those students are affiliated. That's why we're here today, because this student group was affiliated with the National Turning Point USA organization. And what the board policy says is that the proposed student organization must submit to the Associate Superintendent, who is this order in this situation, a list of members, staff, its constitution and bylaws, and the constitution and bylaws of any off-campus organization with which it is affiliated, and that's the sentence at issue. The final sentence states, "If an organization does not have a constitution, it must submit a written statement of purpose to the administration for consideration." That was done in this case. LG, who was a student who filed the application, did submit a written statement of purpose as well as a local constitution for the student organization there at Johnston. The vote was then tabled as this issue was raised about the language of the policy and whether it meant that the board could or could not approve this organization without the constitution and bylaws of the national organization. So there, this was not a policy that was ignored or that the board flippantly tossed off to the side. It was heavily discussed, as appellant noted, over the course of these two meetings and possibly even a third meeting about what this policy meant, how it had been previously applied by this board, and whether or not it prevented action in this case. And ultimately, the board concluded that because they had the written statement of purpose, they did not require those national bylaws. They were told by Associate Superintendent Rorda, as well as the student who applied for the club, that they attempted to obtain them and could not. And what the proposed order acknowledged, I think at the end of the day, is largely irrelevant whether those documents did in fact exist or not disputing that they do exist now, is that the board was entitled to accept those statements from its staff, from the student, that we attempted to obtain these documents and they weren't there. Another important factor here is the board's past practice. So the board had in the past approved student organizations with national affiliations other than Turning Point USA without requiring these national documents and by accepting a written statement of purpose. So they felt that they would be in keeping with their previous interpretation and application of this policy by proceeding with the vote even without those documents in this case. Second argument pertains to the Equal Access Act. The Equal Access Act is a federal law that requires secondary schools receiving federal aid to provide equitable access to student groups. So it can't be, groups cannot be excluded based on viewpoint. And historically, a lot of this had to do with religious organizations of students on school campuses. And there are five requirements under the Equal Access Act. That the meetings be voluntary and student-initiated, that the school does not sponsor the meeting, that employees of the school are only present in a non-participatory capacity, that the meetings don't materially and substantially interfere with the orderly conduct of the school, and number five, important here, that non-school persons may not direct, conduct, control, or attend activities of student groups. Again, this law was fully considered by the board. I don't deny that there were questions that remained about the Equal Access Act, and I can tell you that's because there is minimal case law out there, if any, exploring this idea of what control means by an outside group and how much is too much input and does the fact that they have this contact with a national organization really mean that they're controlled by that organization? And to that, I would say, there would be no club if not for the student who brought the application forward. There's no evidence of coercion or improper persuasion. He decided to file the application. He followed through with the application. It was a student organization. He reassured the board that it would be independent and that it would be controlled by students, and they accepted that statement. Finally, as to the conflict issue, there are illegal conflicts of interest for board members that are outlined under Iowa Code 68B.2A. You have the briefing on this matter. And again, we would just urge the board to adopt the proposed order's take on conflict of interest, which is, yes, these individual board members did have outside interest in this group. They showed support for the group outside the setting of the board meeting. It's objective, we can't deny that. It's in the record. However, that is not the type of conflict of interest that's contemplated by Chapter 68B. There was no benefit given to this group that wasn't available to anyone else. LG, who applied for the group, was asked to follow the board's policies, just like anyone else who was asked to form a student club. And he was also asked to take the extra step of going to search for these national documents, which had not previously been a point of issue for the, for the board. So for all of those reasons, we ask you to affirm the proposed order before you.
Thank you. The next step in the process is for the board to deliberate. Ask questions? Discuss ideas?
May I ask counsel a question?
I think we can discuss this in session. This is a matter that may have been litigation, which advice to the board would be
That would be a good idea.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay. Well, let's, let's so down. So have you read the grounds for doing so? Let me bring up chapter. So the motion would be that pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 21.5.1(c), that you would move that the board go into closed session, and then you have to vote by name, a roll call vote.
So moved. Been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, excuse me.
Axiotus?
Aye.
Hadley?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Kane?
I have a question. That was Mike May.
He missed her.
I have a question on this. So the statute you just cited, what would be the basis for this? The likelihood of litigation?
To discuss strategy with counsel in matters that are presently in litigation, where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body. So the next step after this, if the appellants or the appellees are wanting to go further, they can appeal any decision that this board makes to District Court in Iowa on judicial review. So I think it fits under that category. And in addition, it's not actually listed in the Iowa Code Open Meetings section, but you are entitled to receive advice from counsel in confidence.
Okay, so this is just to ask the question and get the answer, but we'd come back then to address the deliberations on this would be public?
They don't have to be. You can deliberate in closed session.
That's my, that's, that's my question. I mean, every time we have an appeal brought to us, there's the prospect of subsequent litigation. So we could do all these according to that analysis in closed session.
And do you do them or you do?
They're usually open. I think the difference here is this, this particular step hasn't happened in any of the previous appeals. So we're kind of a step farther in a different type of appeal than we've ever had before.
Oh, I, I get that.
I get what you're saying. So I think that's the discretion in why this particularly one would be different, but it's ultimately the board's decision.
It is the board's. You do not have to go in session.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Mike May? May?
No. No.
He already said yes.
He already said yes.
Since he already said yes.
You didn't call my name. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm going to vote no.
Ed Robbins?
Yes.
So do we have Steve stop the recording?
4:2.
Yeah. Okay, so we will go into closed session. We have Steve stop the recording till we
And you stop the recording. We need to keep Mike on.
And we need to clear the room.
Okay, yeah, give me a minute to do so. Stop the recording now.